Okay.
Okay, then.
I'm gonna call the meeting of the Clayton City Council on October 3rd to order and note that all council members are present except for Councilmember David Shuey, who is on his way here. He has a little traffic congestion that he's struggling with right now. And then we will get into the agenda. But first, if you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. What we have up first is our consent calendar.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ordered. Just so you'll know, I'm waiting for Councilmember Shuey to arrive before we do the recognitions and presentations. So, we're gonna go directly to item five at this point, and then we'll come back to item four. Item five is a number of reports, and we have the Planning Commission here, who I believe is gonna give us a report. Come right up, our vice chair.
Good evening. On September 26th, we had a Planning Commission meeting. All members were present. There were no conflict of interest. There was one item on the agenda, and the item was SPR 0317. It's a site plan review permit for Mr. Jameson Sinclair at 910 Kenstone Drive. And staff did an excellent report in presenting the plans. The site plan actually sits within all setbacks. The footprint allowed was 559 square feet below the footprint that were allowed. The whole construction area allowed, they sit 2,159 feet below. The height allowed, there was only their maximum, well, they were at 18, maximum was 35. So, they sit within everything, so the discussion was pretty easy, pretty forward. The plan was good, and we adopted the recommendation of the staff on approval and moving this plan up for the city council for their review. That was the only item on our agenda, and with that, that's it.
Any questions of our illustrious vice chair?
Good, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna go back now to item four, which is record, excuse me, recognitions and presentations. And this is an opportunity to recognize the students from our three various schools, the elementary, middle, and charter high school, for the program Do the Right Thing. And this particular month is for August, or it actually is for two months, August and September, and the category is responsibility. So, at first, we're gonna ask two members of the elementary school to come forward as soon as I pull the appropriate. There you go. Okay, I have two. I have both Jonah Sosirin and Logan Coneman, and I'm gonna ask Jonah to come up first. And then I understand we have, hello Jonah, how are you? Nice to meet you. And where is your, I know there's a teacher here from the, come on up, because we wanna hear all about what Jonah has done to get recognized for responsibility. There you go.
Thank you. All right, I'm so proud to be here to see Jonah receive this message.
There's a camera right up there, and the folks at home will be able to see it.
Yeah, you can hold your certificate like we did in school. Fantastic. So, I am proud to be here for Jonah. He is an extremely responsible student. As a first grader, I think we can all learn from his example. Jonah makes good choices and does the right thing, whether someone is watching or not. He just knows it's the right thing to do. So, congratulations for always striving to be your best.
And the man who wants to take his photograph with us, because then we're gonna bring up both of the students from the elementary school and do a group photo, which will appear in the Clayton Pioneer.
Thank you.
Got it. Congratulations Jonah. We'll bring you back up. Okay, I do have another one.
Do all the schools together, Jonah.
All the schools together.
For the picture.
At the end.
One photo.
Okay, we have, got the right one now. We have Logan Coneman, and he's, or yeah, he's also being recognized for doing the right thing. Oh, excuse me. She, I'm sorry. Nice to meet you. And I will let your teacher tell all about the things you've done.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Good job. Logan has been working hard at school since she got there, and also is an example for everyone and a role model, and I'm also very proud of her. We know we can always look to her if we don't know what to do, to do it the right way. And also, you know that you don't need someone watching to make the right choices, right? Correct? Okay. So, we are very proud of you, and thank you.
That's great.
Yep. Welcome to you.
Okay, what's next? Help me out. Okay, Patty, you wanna come up with me here? And we're gonna introduce from the middle school, we have two students also being recognized for doing the right thing. And the first one is Amaya Perez. Where is Amaya? There she is. Patty, tell us all about her accomplishments.
Well, Amaya, you can see, has this beautiful smile, and she always does have that. And she's a delight to have at school. She thoroughly, she's a student that you can tell really enjoys and loves learning, and likes to come to school every day, right?
Yeah.
So, Amaya, for responsibility, she's one of our office TAs, and we're very particular about where office TAs are. So, she's our fourth period office TA, fifth, fifth period. But we can always rely on her to be running around school with messages and making copies and just keeping us all in line.
Good. Even if the camera won't take some photographs, come right ahead. Turn your certificate around so people can see that. We're gonna bring all the students back up for a group photo that'll be, get posted in the Clayton Pioneer. Okay, the next one from the Diablo View Middle School is Scott Tomaskiewicz. And here he comes. Congratulations. And I'll let Patty do the honors.
Scott is another example of a student that really enjoys coming to school. He's a good student academically, is responsible, a good friend. And also, last year, I think it was spring, Scott was, you were a TA, right? So, we were kinda noticing him, so we decided that he would be a great office TA. So, we kind of recruited him in the springtime. He was like, oh, can I, can I think about it and get back to you? Can you believe that asking? But anyway, Scott is our seventh period TA. So, he's a great, very responsible student and delight to have him as a student at Diablo View.
Okay, next, we have from the Clayton Valley Charter High School. Come on up. Thank you.
I bolt them up the same time?
Sure. We'll do both of them then.
You always wanna do it your way, Bob.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, we have two students that are pretty special at Clayton Valley High School. They're the first students at our charter school to win the National Merit Scholars. And they're in the top 1% on the PSAT test, and they're just out scanning students. They showed tremendous responsibility throughout their four years, and you're gonna have great careers ahead of them. We're real excited to introduce them tonight. We have Samuel Pearson. And Logan Schostal.
Great. Would you guys like to say anything? Anyway, take some photographs of the guys, all right? Great job for being recognized for responsibility. Okay, thank you very much. And now, we're gonna bring all the students back up, and we're gonna take a group photo with both, with all of them. And Patty, come on up, and the, come on back up again. Yep.
The teachers.
This is gonna appear in the Clayton Pioneer.
You need the little ones in front?
Yes.
And the two middle schoolers together? And the, and the two high schoolers together? That's orders of the Clayton Pioneer, sorry.
All right.
Not generally, but you can go up there, sure. Why not? Okay. All right. Scrunching together, folks. Little bit tighter. There you go. All right. All right, good.
Okay. Congratulations to all of the students. And it's really important that we recognize their contributions to each one of their schools.
You know, Mayor, one thing, it's funny, because I think, Julie, how long has Do the Right Thing been around?
Ten years.
Yeah, I think that, and I'm maybe a little biased, because I coached Logan, but I do believe that we saw Logan up here with Do the Right Thing in elementary school, middle school, and the high school, which just shows what an amazing kid he is, and it's probably from his coach, right?
Again, thank you very much for that, and we're now gonna go back into the business of the council, and if you would like to stay, you're welcome to, but I know that a lot of times, there they go.
Don't run. This is a good, we're not gonna take offense.
This is a good lesson in civics. Congratulations to all the students. That's great. Okay, we're now completed the recognitions and presentations, and now we're back into the reports. We've had the Planning Commission. Now, the Trails and Landscape Committee did have a meeting on the 25th. Laura, have we got any report on that?
Yes, the committee members could not make this evening's meeting, but have asked that I convey to you that they reviewed the first quarter report for the current fiscal budget year, covering July 2017 through September 2017. They also reviewed the draft of the year-end budget information, the closeout for fiscal year 1617. They selected a chair and a vice chair. The chair is Howard Kaplan, and the vice chair is Dane Horton. And the chair is going to be preparing the draft of the annual report for fiscal year 1617, of the Trails and Landscaping Committee sitting as the citizens' oversight for the tax measure. Hopes to have that ready for a meeting in November, which would be the timeframe that they're targeting to have their next meeting, so they can review the draft of the annual report and hope to roll that up to the city council at a December meeting. The committee members were advised that all, we have currently five members, four were present at that meeting, and all five members, because of the cycles of when they got appointed, we have up to 11 that can serve. Several have dropped off. They all happened to drop off on the same cycle, so all five of our current members' terms are up in December, and so they were provided an application form if they wanted to continue forward on the TLC to submit by, I think it's the end of November. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Okay, city manager and staff, what have we got from that perspective?
No report.
No report? Okay, we're now go to the city council. We'll start off with Councilmember David Shuey.
I don't think I have anything to report.
All right, thank you. Tuya Catalano.
So, I attended, we held with, together with Vice Mayor Hayden, we had the Budget Committee meeting on Friday, not February, September 22nd, where we met with the city auditors and reviewed their findings on the 2016-2017 fiscal year. And then, other than that, volunteered at the Oktoberfest, like many other people.
Great. Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Keith Hayden.
All right, just a few meetings and activities. As Councilman Catalano indicated, did attend the Budget Subcommittee meeting on the 22nd. Once again, got a real nice recommendation and commendation from the auditors, that Clayton continued to set a wonderful example of having their audit conducted quickly, and one of the first, and again, no major issues that needed to be addressed, and another excellent audit. So, you'll hear more about that when it's presented on an actual final basis. Then on the 23rd, attended the Skip Ipsen Botchy Tournament, which recognizes a founder of Skipolines. We have a memorial botchy tournament, and that money is donated to charity. 25th, did attend the Trails and Landscape Committee, that city manager, vice manager just talked about. And then on the 28th, attended the CBCA Monthly Meeting. That's our monthly meeting, where the public is invited to join the club members themselves and hear about what's going on in Clayton. Always a very interesting meeting to attend. I encourage people that wanna find out more about Clayton and our club to attend that. That's the last Thursday of each month. And then, like most of us here on the council, also worked at the Oktoberfest this weekend. Very successful festival.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah, just a few this time. We had a Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board meeting, where we reviewed the legislative package that finally completed the session in Sacramento, what got accomplished and what didn't. We had an Association of Bay Area Governments meeting. We had a meeting of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, actually, three of those, and a, the inaugural meeting of something called CASA, which is the Committee for Affordable and Sustainable Accommodations. How do we get more housing in the Bay Area is, is what we're doing. It's a combination of stakeholders and Bay Area council folks and other housing advocates, as well as members of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and I'm there representing as the president of the Association of Bay Area Governments. And it's going to be a year-long project to try to see how we can jumpstart getting affordable housing, more housing at all income levels in the Bay Area, because we are very short on housing. We've added over 500,000 jobs, but we have not added the commensurate amount of housing. And so, we need to keep up for our kids and grandkids, and many others are going to leave the Bay Area, because they cannot afford housing. They are commuting from the Central Valley, and as any of you who have driven that traffic recently know, it is brutal. So, you know, the, the economic health of the Bay Area is dependent on getting adequate affordable housing. Also attended the Oktoberfest, and it was a great weekend. I don't think I've ever seen so many people on Main Street as we had on Saturday afternoon. So, very lively event.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting, I was busy on a number of things, and the first is back on the 21st of September, as part of the council responsibilities, I sit on the board of the County Connection. And just as a quick aside, the County Connection did provide shuttle service during the whole Oktoberfest. That was helping people move around from the designated parking areas to the downtown area. And one thing that did transpire at the, at that last County Connection Board meeting, I was elected to the position of secretary, which is the third officer position of the board, so that was quite an honor. And if we continue there, there'll be other leadership roles to, to attend and be part of, because I now moved from, I was on the marketing and planning and legislative committee at that entity, but now moving into scheduling and operations will give me a little bit broader perspective on what, what the County Connection does in terms of providing service through the nine, excuse me, 10 cities that are represented on that, on that board. Later that night, attended the Contra Costa County Association of Realtors recognition event for elected officials. Friday night, and I know Vice Mayor Keith Hayden was there, but Wendy Moore of Berkshire Hathaway Realty opened up an office that sort of straddles the border between Clayton and Concord, and it was a well-attended event, and a lot of people were out to, out to see that. On the 23rd, I also attended and played in the Skip Ipsen Memorial Tournament. Then on the 28th, I attended a launch at JFK University. They are part of what's called the National University System, and National University has opened up a campus at the facility over in Pleasant Hill, and it was quite a well, quite a well-attended event to showcase all of the things that, first, that John F. Kennedy University does, but also now that, combined with, with National University. Great, great institution for education. CBCA meeting later that night, general membership, and finally, over the weekend, the Oktoberfest. Okay, that's all we have for reports. I'm gonna move now into item six. Item six is public comment for non-agended items. So, if anyone in the, in the audience wishes to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have two, or three minutes in order to address that issue. Seeing none, I'm gonna close that and move into public hearings. 7A, consider the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 478, amending chapter 15.09 of the Clayton Municipal Code to adopt the 2016, excuse me, 2016 California Fire Code with changes, additions, and deletions as allowed by state law. Mindy Jenrick, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This item on the agenda is for the city council to consider the adoption of the 2016 Fire Code with local changes, additions, and deletions. Although the code applies statewide, state law authorizes a local jurisdiction to modify or change the code and establish more restrictive standards if the local jurisdiction finds that the modifications and changes are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographic conditions. The Contra Costa County Fire Protection District provides fire protection services to the city of Clayton, and since the city is served by the district, staff recommends ratification of the district's fire code ordinance without any changes. The ratification of the district's fire code ordinance would provide consistency in application in the entire service area that they provide services to. The major changes to the code to address local conditions include more restrictive automatic sprinkler system requirements, clarification of the requirement to provide standby EMS for large events, because the statewide code did not address that the fire agency could also be an ambulance providing entity, inclusion of the district's weed abatement program, and establishing requirements for fire apparatus access roads. Also, I'd like to introduce Mr. Robert Marshall from the district, who is here in the audience this evening, to answer any questions that the city council may have beyond staff's knowledge of, of the fire code. Therefore, staff is recommending the city clerk read ordinance number 478 by title and number only, and wait for the reading, and then motion to approve ordinance number 478 for introduction to amend chapter 15.09 of the Clayton Municipal Court Code in order to implement the 2016 Fire.
Are there any questions from the council? Whoa, what was that? Anyway, any questions from staff on, or the council to the staff on this item? We do have one card, and I see it's from Robert Marshall, the fire marshal. And we're gonna let him tell us all about what that is from your perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for considering our ordinance and codifying it into your municipal code. As she said, there are a few changes in there, although the majority of the changes are actually just carryforwards from the previous ordinance that we've had. The one that she mentioned about the large events and ambulance standby, that one is new to this code, and it's because at the last time that we did this, we were not a ambulance provider at the time. And so, this basically allows us to be able to provide that service. It's actually not a service that is unfamiliar to a lot of folks. It's something that AMR has done typically, but now that we're actually the ambulance provider, and AMR provides contract services to us, we've put it into the code there. The only other significant change really has to do with fire sprinklers with schools, and particularly private schools. The way that the code was written, the sprinkler requirement for a private school was actually very high. We lowered it, although we didn't lower it to zero, just like a public school currently is, we lowered it to 2,000 square feet, which is about 100 students. At that point, we figured there was a necessity to protect private school students as well. All of the other things that are in that ordinance are just carryforwards. We did remove some things that are no longer necessary, because they've been adopted into the larger statewide code, so we didn't need to have them in our ordinance anymore. And at this point, I'm open to questions from you, if you have any.
Thank you. Anybody?
Just to clarify, it sounds like we're being asked to approve the same amendments that the fire district has adopted.
Correct. The, the county has already adopted these amendments into the ordinance, into the county ordinance system, so this is really a ratification on your side, as well as adopting it into your municipal code.
Okay, so we can rely on this as your recommendation as well?
Absolutely. Yes, yeah.
Great. Any other, just?
I just wanted to make a comment. I was, I was glad to read through it. I think the language seems, at least to me, to be far clearer about weed abatement, especially on private property, and the measures that can be taken there for abatement. We have a few properties within the town that have been very hard to get managed, and you're probably aware of those.
We are, yes.
And I think putting some real teeth in there makes a difference.
Yeah, and that's one of our more important things of the ordinance, really, is that weed abatement component. As you know, this year, we had an abundance of rain, and so that made this particular year a little bit more challenging than it had been in the past. We're working towards it, you know, we still aren't 100%, but we're, you know, we've got our contractor out there who's doing a lot of work all over the district, including here in Clayton, so.
Appreciate it, thank you. We have a couple of chronic properties near my neighborhood that are problems.
We're, we're trying.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Marshall? None? Well, thank you very much for that enhancement on the, on the item. And again, this is a public-carrying item, and so I wanna make sure that any other member of the public that would like to address this and provide some input, please come forward, state your name, and you'll be allowed three minutes.
We didn't have any cards for this one.
All right, I'm gonna close that, bring it back up, and see.
I move we have the city clerk read ordinance 478 by title and number only, and wait for the reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded to read this ordinance in with, just as stated by Councilmember Shuey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye. Any opposed?
Ordinance number 478, an ordinance amending chapter 15.09 of the Clayton Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2016 California Fire Code with local changes, additions, and deletions, Z0A-05-17.
I move we approve ordinance 478 for first reading with finding its adoption will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and is therefore exempt under CEQA.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on this item? And as stated by Councilmember Shuey and seconded by Councilmember Pierce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye. Any opposed? It's ordered. All right, that concludes item 7A. We move now to 7B, which is to consider adoption of an urgency ordinance number 479, placing an interim local moratorium on the operation or establishment of parolee, parolee homes and community supervision programs within the city of Clayton. And I'll ask again, the Community Development Director, do you address this?
This item would be an extension of an urgency ordinance that would place a temporary moratorium on parolee homes and community supervision programs. moratorium on parolee homes and community supervision programs for one year. On November 2nd, 2016, the City Council passed a 45-day moratorium on these uses, and then subsequently, on December 6th, 2016, the council extended the moratorium for 10 months and 15 days, and it's now set to expire on October 21st. The additional time allowed by the state statute would provide the opportunity for staff to research, study, and draft regulations for the planning commission and city council consideration. This ordinance is really in response to AB 109, which went into effect October 1st, 2011, transferring the responsibility of supervising certain inmates and parolees from the state down to the counties. Staff has concerns regarding these land use types due to recidivism rates, which could indicate that these types of services and homes raise the potential for negative impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, particularly if there were a dense concentration of parolee homes or service providers, or these uses were to be located near sensitive uses such as parks or schools. Currently, the type of support services being provided by the county's community supervision program, which are provided to parolees and probationers, are not defined in the Clayton Municipal Code, and some of these services could be characterized as professional office uses, which are permitted by right in the limited commercial district and are also allowable on the second-story of buildings in the town center's specific plan area. The intent is to not permanently ban these uses, but rather to allow the city the opportunity to study appropriate locations, concentrations, distances from sensitive uses such as schools and parks, and to adopt operational requirements. Therefore, it's recommended the City Council motion to have the city clerk read Ordinance Number 479 by title and number only and waive further reading and motion to adopt Ordinance Number 479. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments, questions from staff? Yes?
Quick question. When do you think you anticipate you'll be bringing this back in terms of your findings?
It'll probably be sometime in the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, just sounds like another extension.
Yeah, okay, so another extension. Just out of curiosity, are we aware of anybody interested in opening up the residence for parolees?
We received one inquiry back just when it was originally introduced, back in November. The city received an inquiry about opening a possible parolee home in town, but beyond that, there hasn't been any follow-up or any other further communications with that particular provider or any other providers for that matter.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions of staff, this is a public hearing item. I'm going to open up for public comment on that, and if anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to address the council on this item. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on this and bring it back for discussion by the council or recommendations, or what's your pleasure?
Move that the city clerk read the interim urgency ordinance, Number 479, by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded to waive further reading, and I'll turn it over. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered.
Ordinance Number 479, an urgency ordinance making findings and extending a temporary moratorium on the establishment, construction, and operation of parolee homes and community supervision programs for a period of one year.
Thank you.
All right. Based on that, then, I may move that we adopt the interim urgency ordinance, Number 479, by a four-fifths affirmative vote by the full City Council to continue the prohibition on the establishment, construction, and operation of community supervision programs and parolee homes for an additional one-year period.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue the moratorium and the following language that goes with that. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all who signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered. All right. We'll now move into action items, and the first one is Action Item 8A, a public, excuse me, a policy discussion on the encroachments into the public right-of-way and fence locations for exterior side setbacks. And again, Mindy Gentry, our Community Development Director.
In the month of September, the city staff initiated two code enforcement cases regarding construction of retaining walls and fences within the public right-of-way, and they were constructed without building permits. The first case I'd like to go over is 199 Mount Terra Parkway. The right-of-way here is approximately 5 feet 6 inches from the back of the sidewalk, and the wall is approximately 2 feet from the back of walk. So you can see from this picture that the wall is clearly encroaching into the public right-of-way. The retaining wall also exceeds 36 inches in height, therefore would need a building permit, which was not obtained. Fence has also been placed on top of the retaining wall exceeding the 6-foot height requirements as well as the locational requirements. When a fence and retaining wall are within 3 feet of one another, they are counted as one structure for the purposes of calculating height. Further, the setback requirement for a fence on an exterior side lot is 5 feet in from the property line. Therefore, in this particular instance, the fence would have to be placed approximately 10 feet 6 inches from the back of the sidewalk. The other case study is located at 401 Wright Court. Again, you have a 6-foot, or a fence exceeding the 6-foot height requirement as well as the locational requirement, and a retaining wall located within the public right-of-way. And this was all, the way that this is currently constructed now would also require a building permit because it exceeds the 7-foot height requirement, and that was not obtained either in this case. So here's some further pictures showing the utilities and the streetlight pole, and they kind of jogged the fence out to make accommodations for those utilities, but then moved directly to behind the back of the sidewalk. And also, you can hear, see the height difference between the neighbor's fence, which is approximately probably about 6 feet, and it jogs up significantly a couple of feet in height. So to recap the issues and the violations for both cases, there's a retaining wall and fence located within the public right-of-way. The structures are too tall, the fence is not in the correct location, which should be 5 feet from the property line, and no building permits were issued in either case. So the components of these two code enforcement cases really brought to light some of the issues that are occurring citywide. The first issue is the encroachments into the public right-of-way that have occurred throughout the city, as well as the lack of compliance for the required location for fences on the exterior side setbacks. And staff has put together some examples showing, in this particular case, a retaining wall clearly in the public right-of-way, a fence also in the public right-of-way, another fence, more retaining walls, and this is just a quick sampling of properties around town, and there's numerous other instances of this occurring. So when rights-of-way are required as a condition of a development, they are intended to not only fulfill the current needs imposed by that development, but also the future needs that may come with increased demands from both public and governmental oversight agencies. Local governments, including the City of Clayton, are currently faced with or will be faced with in the near future two such demands for additional space within the city's existing rights-of-way. Demands are being made by the wireless industry to place more equipment and facilities within the right-of-way, and secondly, the Regional Water Quality Control Board is pushing for stormwater treatment of the city's streets, and the only real opportunity available to meet this requirement would be with the existing rights-of-way. By allowing private structures to be constructed within the right-of-way, the city could be severely limiting its ability to prepare for the future and could be pushing this issue off onto future generations instead of preventing them from occurring now. The city does not have the ability, does have the ability through its code to require the owners of any encroachment that necessitates removal, relocation, or abandonment to be done so at the cost of the owner. While the city does have this option, it raises possible logistical matters for a city with limited staff resources. These issues include additional timing on necessary city projects due to the relocation of these structures, additional paperwork to memorialize the encroachment, as well as coordination with the property owner on the construction and removal of these structures. Further, if the property owner does not have sufficient funds in order to remove these structures, then it is on the, then the city is in the position of removing these structures, outlining public funds to do so, and then placing a lien on the property to recover those costs in the future. So given the aforementioned issues, staff is strongly recommending any further unauthorized encroachments into the city's rights-of-way not be tolerated and require them to be removed or alternatively require recorded document with conditions to best protect the city. So staff has the following policy questions for the City Council to consider. Does the council want to allow encroachments into the public right-of-way? If so, staff is recommending conditions of approval, such as it being a revocable permit, providing indemnification to the city, providing liability insurance with the city named as the additional insured. The city would not be responsible for any cost for these structures in regards to the permitting or the cost to remove them, and the permit is liable and responsible for the encroachment in its entirety. So the second issue that came to light with these two code enforcement cases was the location of fences on the exterior side lots. The code currently allows fences on the exterior side lot to be a maximum of 30 inches in height within 5 feet of the property line, and you can see that it's kind of like a shaded gray area as to where fences would not be able to exceed that, the 30-inch height requirement. And then they're able to go to a maximum of 6 feet once they're set back 5 feet from the property line. Staff sees the current fencing regulations for exterior side lots as a potential issue because a residential property owner either compromises privacy by having a fence that's only 30 inches in height at the exterior side property line or has to sacrifice usable land in order to have a 6-foot fence. Further, the required 5-foot setback from the property line creates a larger no-man's land when coupled with the existing public right-of-way that's directly behind the sidewalk. The City of Clayton does not maintain landscaping within the public right-of-way and is left up to the property owner, which may or may not be maintained. If 6-foot fences were allowed to be located on the property line, of which there's already numerous instances in the city, it would then reduce the amount of space to be landscaped between the back of the sidewalk and the fence. And so El Molino actually has a really good example of the different hodgepodge of fencing types that are currently going on through the city. So in this particular case, you have a fence that's set back approximately 10 feet, which would be compliant currently with how the city's regulations are pertaining to fence heights in this zoning designation. This fence is approximately 5 feet back, so that's kind of what you would look like if you were to move the fencing requirements to allow it to be located on the property line on an exterior side lot. And then here, you've got a good example of showing one that's 5 feet and one that's about 10 feet back, and these are houses that have a common property line amongst their backyards. And then here's another one that's about 5 feet in width. So the policy question here for the council is, would you like staff to research and analyze exterior side fences to possibly be allowed at the property line? Historically, code enforcement has been reactive to complaints from the community and not proactively seeking out violations. This issue has raised the question, since the city is now aware of the existing encroachments, should the city be seeking compliance from all of the property owners that have unauthorized encroachments? Some of the issues that arise out of this are the allocation of staff time and resources, which are already limited, to address this widespread issue, as well as the fairness of enforcement. The city is not required to enforce its municipal code, and the courts have recognized that due to limited resources, and recognize that some violation of a city's ordinance will go unsighted and that absent any deliberate or intentional discrimination, such selective enforcement is legal. Alternatively, the city could enforce prospectively on either a proactive or a reactionary basis. However, it does raise the question of staff trying to determine when the construction of these structures occurred unless the structure was currently under construction. So from the code enforcement standpoint for policy decisions, staff is looking for the City Council to provide direction on whether or not to be proactive and seek compliance for all unauthorized encroachments into the public right-of-way, or does the council want city staff to enforce prospectively, and is that enforcement proactive or reactive? And then lastly, to help circumvent these unauthorized encroachments from becoming code enforcement cases, a public education effort to help get the word out to the community would be beneficial. Currently, the city's fencing requirements are located in the municipal code as well as the Citizens Guide, but other possibilities would be mailing out to HOAs, fencing contractors, other contractors, posting on the city's website, and possibly an article in the Clayton Pioneer. So it's recommended that the City Council provide direction to staff on structures encroaching into the public right-of-way and the fencing regulations for exterior side setbacks, as well as the code enforcement issue. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. David?
This may be for Mala, but Mindy or Mala. In the event that we allow a known problem that was not properly done to go, and 10 years from now, we get a request from PG&E or Shell or somebody that they need space, what is going to be the impact on the city and the homeowner at that time if they need to get into that space?
The city currently has within its code to remove any unauthorized structures, or authorized for that matter, that need to be relocated for instances of PG&E or other type of utilities need to have access to the city's rights-of-way. So the city does still have teeth in some respects to remove these structures down the line.
But we would remove them at our expense and bill them, or would we be responsible?
The property owner would first be notified to remove those structures, and if they're then uncooperative or if they lack the financing, then the city would have the ability to go in, to remove it.
And once we go in and remove it, the cost, would we then lien or?
Yes, the process would place a lien on the property.
Okay. I have comments, but none other questions right now.
Okay. Tuya and then Julie.
I have one quick question regarding the sidewalk width, and maybe this is part of sort of the public education component, too, but is the official sidewalk width, is it typically more than just a concrete portion? Or is it typically just a concrete portion? So is it obvious to a resident as to where their property line is and where the sidewalk starts?
Typically not. It also varies in certain parts of town. In a lot of the cases that we showed tonight, it's a monolithic-type sidewalk. There's other parts of town that have a detached sidewalk, but the typical, and this is, I say that with a caveat that it is typical, you usually have 6 inches of curb and 5 feet of sidewalk, and then usually there's 5 feet of public right-of-way behind that. But however, it's on a case-by-case basis. And if the property owner really wants to know, I mean, we can give them a good approximate of where the right-of-way line does lie, but if you want a really good, accurate way to determine where your property line is, a surveyor needs to be hired, and they need to mark out the property lines.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Julie?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know in our neighborhood, the setback from back of sidewalk is 7 and 1/2 feet for much of our development, so I think it does change by subdivision. I know when we were in Westwood, it was something like 7 feet or something like that back of sidewalk, something like, it was an odd number back of curb. And there, at least, there were utilities that ran behind the sidewalk about 5 and 1/2 feet, because when the subdivision was built and they had to come back and redo all the phone lines, we all had trenches down the front yards. So that was not a pretty picture, and their fix was not wonderful either. But let me, just for clarification, I like, David will have comments when it comes to that point, but let me just clarify that if a permit, which is required, had been requested prior to building, these requirements would have been given to either the homeowner or the contractor, correct?
Correct. They would have not have been able to build. And the two key studies, they would not have been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Keith?
Question. Now, you refer to a 5-foot right-of-way beyond the sidewalk. Is 5-foot the standard width of that right-of-way?
It's a typical. I mean, each street is going to change whatever was dedicated when that development was approved and recorded, but that is kind of, you know, the typical that we use in a lot of scenarios, but again, it would be on a case-by-case basis.
So we couldn't come up with a hard and fast 5-foot right-of-way requirement?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? This is a public item. This is a public item, and I have a number of cards, and I'm going to call up, and each person will have three minutes to address the council on this item, 8A. And please state your name, and I'm going to call up first Robert Brenneman and have him speak on item 8A. Robert?
Yeah, item 8A, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My neighbor is Aaron Colt and his wife, Jana. They, I'm the direct neighbor to 199 Mount Air Parkway. I can't really speak on the, on the encroachment issue, but I will tell you that, that the structure that has been built, the wall and the fence is aesthetically very pleasing. My driveway is adjacent to, to the, to the wall, and prior to the wall being there, it was overgrown junipers, and it was very difficult to see backing onto the driveway. Visibility is very much improved with the new wall and the new fence, and I would like to, I would like to see the council move in favor of, of continuing with the project. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Question, on the impact on the visibility as you approach the corner then?
Back, for me, it's backing out of the driveway.
No, I'm just saying, from your perspective.
Oh, it's, again, it's, it's, it's at least the same, if not improved.
And you're on which side?
I'm on Mount, Mount Wilson Way, and so I'm around the corner from, from 199 Mount, Mount Air Parkway.
And you have a similar fence in your yard?
I do have a similar fence in my yard, yes I do.
It looks like it was even maybe built by the same contractor.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Thank you. Greg Roberts.
So I'm the other neighbor on the other side, and in full disclosure, I'm also the con, or represent the contractor that did the work, at least the wall in, in the current project that's on hold.
I'm sorry, you said you represent them?
Well, I work for them.
Okay.
That's how I'm represented.
Never say represent in front of lawyers unless you mean it.
And we've got three of them, and one stood over there. Okay. But the wall, we believe to be within current code, you know, it varies from three to four feet, and it's just over three feet, maybe a little bit higher on the one end. And also is structurally built to manufacturer specifications with GeoGrid, compacted layers, a base rock, a proper drainage system behind it, and sleeveits, which are an anchored system for fence, fences that can be placed next to a wall, so they don't put pressure on the wall. So structurally, it's very sound, although I didn't build the fence. The wall, which was done over a year ago, is built correctly and within what we thought to be the current specifications. Visually, it's one of the best looking systems I've seen that we built. I'm directly on the other side of him next door, at 191 Mount Air. So of course I have.
Because you represent the company, when you say you thought it met regulations, how did you go about thinking that?
Well, typically, we're allowed a wall four, four feet without a permit. That's in most areas. So we kept it, I think it's just over three feet, and maybe just over three feet with the cap, and typically the cap is not considered part of that.
Staff, can you, can you pull up the photo again that was of that?
So it may be bigger at the very end, which could be brought down. So this end is a little bit higher, you see how it steps up? But the rest, I believe is just over three feet at the other end. So this end could actually be brought down to the same height as the further end down there. This second section above, that is just a support for the, the paver area we're, we're gonna hopefully complete.
Who's the contractor?
Sorry?
Who's the contractor?
Viking Pavers.
For the fence as well?
No.
Who built the wall and the fence?
We built, we built the wall about a year ago. A and J Fencing did.
Does A.J. Fencing have a business license?
They do not. We have sent them several notifications, and they still do not have a business license.
So, so did I hear that there was no, there is no business license?
Right.
And obviously, there was no checking to see if this, what you thought, assumed was a
Correct.
standard in other, nobody checked on that? Okay.
And does Viking have a license?
They ended up getting one shortly after the stop work notice was issued.
Sorry, Greg.
Is the fence itself, is that six feet?
I don't know, I didn't, we didn't build a fence, so I, but I know that it's structurally sound because of the preparation we did for whatever fence was going to be put up. So it's a unique system, there's piers that go down, and they're anchored back into the hillside, so it's designed to have a fence directly next to it, so there's no shear on that, on that wall. It can't fall down because it's anchored down at the bottom of the hillside, and that's all down in there. So it's structurally very sound, it's not going anywhere, it has GeoGrid, it's built to the wall manufacturer specifications, and there's an engineering document that we will use for that. So it's permissible. Basically, it's built to code to be permissible if that's necessary.
You indicated you received a stop work notice?
Correct.
Of what additional work were you planning?
So the wall was built a year ago, that was done, and there was nothing else there. We just started the secondary project, which is the patio, which leads out with a slight driveway extension. We started that, what, two months ago? And yeah. So then they, the wall was, they said, oh, the wall's too high, which, okay, but it wasn't part of the current project, if that matters.
Is there any plan to extend this then around to Mount Air Parkway?
The wall?
The wall.
No, no, the wall's done.
The fence?
The wall, we.
So there's no new wall?
It's gonna cut this way then, across?
It's gonna cut across, it's just, it's the same, it's the same.
Can, can we have them come to the mic?
Yeah, they're up next, and I gather that your, Mr. and Mrs. Colt, if you will come up and also respond to any questions, and I know you have a comment card here, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As far as the question to any completion in addition to the fence, yes, we will put a gate in there, which is actually going to be set back farther on the property, roughly about a foot than where the existing gate was, and that'll just be just to close that off. And then for the remainder of the project, it'll just be pavers, and then astroturf, and then bedding with plants and so forth in the back, like a zero landscape, not zero landscape, or whatever they call it, the low water maintenance feature in the back with plants and so forth, for the, to complete the backyard project. Little bit of background on it, me and my wife and I moved into the play, the house roughly four years ago, and one thing we were looking at when we moved in was the, all the junipers on the side yard. I believe when I looked at the packet online, there were pictures of it from 2012. You can imagine 2012 to 2015, juniper species were obviously much higher, and an eyesore to the neighborhood with where it currently was. So one of the main goals was to get the house, the property more up to standards to, you know, Clayton and Dana Hills. With that being said, I talked to, spent a lot of time talking to a lot of the neighbors that had, you know, more up, upkept yards, and you talked about ideas I had, what I was looking at doing. Came up with the idea of to create more structural sound on my fence that was falling down, an older fence in the side hill, I was retaining wall. With that, went to the homeowners association, presented my plans, which actually were farther out, and a little bit higher, once obtaining approval for that, roughly a year. And a handful of months ago, the wall went into place, and then once we were able to save up enough funds, we were able to move on with the project roughly eight months ago, or probably six months ago, with the fence, and had the fence put in by A and J Fencing. Went with A and J Fencing for the same reason we went with Viking Pavers. You know, obviously not knowing a lot about construction and projects, went with Viking Pavers, you know, 20 plus years in the industry, I figured that, you know, if I was gonna do it, I was gonna do it right. You know, so one, it looked good, and then two, for the neighborhood, and then two, it was structurally sound. Same thing with the fence, went with A and J Fence, asking around and getting feedback. I was informed they were a local Clayton company, they did all the, all the fences in Clayton, they were basically, if you wanted a fence, that's where you needed to go. So I went with A and J Fence, they put in the fence. Once that was completed, roughly about six months after that, we started backup with Viking Pavers to complete the remainder of the project. And then like was mentioned by Mr. Roberts, on the 30th of August, came home on a Wednesday around 4:00 PM, had the shutdown notice, called Mo on that evening. Unfortunately, I was not able to take off work on Thursday, but I did take a half day on Friday, went and met with them, and basically said, hey, here's, well, I mean, what do I need to do? I mean, you know, I went with the paving company, I went with the, you know, the fence company, I assumed I was doing the right thing, and wanted to find out, you know, what are my next steps to, one, complete the project, and to, you know, get it to where it needs to be. At that point in time, we sat down, went over everything, sent a follow-up email that was requested with items of why we were doing it, what it was for, and the impact in the neighborhood, neighbors I talked to, and then followed up. The following week, received an out of office, followed up the following week after that, and then, or two weeks after that, when I got another communication, I found out that was being brought on to the meeting tonight, which I greatly appreciate, so thank you, you know, for bringing this up, so I can try to get some closure to it, and hopefully, you know, finish the project, and can you continue to remove the eyesore from Clayton and the neighborhood of the weeds and the, you know, unkempt yard with a more manicured side yard, and then that way we can go into the front yard and, you know, do the, you know, the, you know, low, low landscape, you know, project on the front, to get it to where it actually ties better into the neighborhood, so. Questions?
You mentioned the homeowners, I lived in Dana Hills over 20 years ago, and they were pretty aggressive on making sure that things were compliant. Did they give you any feedback on this project?
You know, they did. When I walked them through what I was doing and provided the plans, they were very, they were very unfavorable removing the junipers. When I took the junipers out, some of them had a roof base of roughly eight to 10 inches wide, extremely high, and so a lot of it was getting, you know, getting rid of the junipers and getting the house to more of the standards of the area from a visual perspective, since it is on a main drive. You know, I did receive a letter from them dated May 26, 2016, you know, with their approval from, from the HOA for, for the actual plans and so forth. Can I see that? What's that? Yeah.
Did you have another question?
What is the actual distance of the wall from the back of sidewalk?
From the wall to the back of the sidewalk? When we initially set it up, I believe we had it measured at roughly three feet.
So that wall, as well as the base of the fence and the interior wall, how deep is the interior wall?
The interior wall.
Well, the wall, the rock wall behind the fence?
That would be probably a good, I would say, two and a half, two to two and a half feet, and that's only, that piece of the wall you see behind it only goes inside the fence a little ways, because what we're, to basically sure up so it doesn't have any falloff from the side, if that makes sense.
Okay, so that one does not continue the full length of the fence?
Correct. That's just, that's, that's for structural, is all that one is for. And we went with the same material for the visual versus doing cinder blocks, so we went with the same material for the visual effect. And the idea behind it was, you know, over the three-year period, you know, driving around the neighborhood and areas in Clayton, and I think there's some other pictures in the packet, a few that I'd submitted, of areas or houses in Dana Hills where there's actually fences on top, literally on top of retaining walls, a cinder block retaining walls, than other, you know, area, or projects in, you know, the town of Clayton. It's, you know, where I originally came with it, you know, originally had the idea, and then the other, you know, and by doing that, be able to match with the other homes in the neighborhood that had side yard access, to kind of have that same benefit of, you know, the use of a side yard from that aspect of it, so.
A quick question to Mindy. I just want to make sure that notification was given to the neighbors of the public hearing this evening to deal with this issue?
This is just an action item, and it's a policy discussion, so the two code enforcement cases that were referenced in the staff report, they were notified that this was coming, but this is just policy direction.
Okay.
And not, you aren't taking any form of, form of action tonight, so there was no notification.
Yes, Tuya.
I do have a question for staff too, now that we're on this vote. So there is a fire hydrant right there, right on the, on that, so is that with the retaining wall where it's located now, is that still adequately accessible?
I don't have that information at this time, but maybe.
Sorry, there was a fire in the back adjacent neighbor, probably six, eight, nine months ago, you'd have checked public record, and the city fire department did tap into that fire, fire hydrant, they had fire trucks parked all along the street, and they tapped into that fire hydrant to put out the roof fire on, if you see the pickup, the house kitty corner going to that direction, sorry, to put the fire out. So yes, it was accessible.
Our city engineer, Scott Almond, has got a comment on this.
We inquired of the fire district, and they want a minimum of three feet clear. So I think in this case, that it looks as though there is three feet clear around it.
There is a three foot clearance.
That's what they require, a minimum of three feet.
David.
Who, how did we become aware of this code violation?
This particular one, we were notified through the USA system, so anytime a contractor
or a property owner calls USA, we get notification.
Any other questions?
Is this your primary residence?
It is.
You're not intending to do this for a rental property or all that?
No. I can barely afford to pay for this, it's taken me three years to save up to piecemeal it.
As I suspected, it says that you're responsible for permits and inspections. Is this your first home that you've owned?
It is. First physical home. I had a condo at one point, but this first physical home.
You knew that you had to go to the homeowners, and then they told you, why didn't you come to the city? What was?
I went with, about a year after approval on that, I went with, and that's why I hired the work out, because I did not know what I was doing or what needed to be done. And, you know, a fault to myself, I assumed going with, one, the price of the project and what it was costing unfortunately, and going with the companies I chose to go with, I assumed it was handled.
Do you have a written contract with Viking, or was this kind of a?
Actually, yeah, I mean, I have a full contract with both A and J and with, you know, with Viking Pavers, you know, the actual contract for the pricing, this, you know, what it's gonna be, the drawing.
And does that contract have in it that you are responsible for getting permits, or is Viking responsible for getting permits?
To be honest with you, I didn't really read on either, either, either of the contracts, the actual, all the fine print.
A and J is probably a one page, right?
It was actually one page email, so.
Yeah, that's a little different than, than the retaining wall stuff. Okay, those are the questions I had.
Anything?
Just another question. Did you hear the conditions that, potential conditions that were proposed by the planning director, the community development director?
I did.
Do you have any issue with any of those that were suggested?
You know, my main thing is, is I just, you know, would hope for fair and equitable treatment of all the other establishments in Clayton in regards to retaining walls, heights that are already in place, seeing that the wall's been in place over a year, the fence has been in place over six months. You know, I'm definitely willing to do whatever I need to do on our part, you know, to rectify the situation, to get the project completed, or to get closure to it. Unfortunately, you know, we do have a dog, so he unfortunately has to stay inside all the time, and he's gotta run home at lunch for the last month, letting him in and out and so forth. So we're really looking to get closure, and that's why I said I really appreciate being able to speak, you know, tonight and answer any questions, just to make sure that, you know, whatever the decision is, you know, it's fair and equitable, and I'm treated just the same as any other resident in Clayton on all the other ones I've seen around, you know, through the two-year process.
Councilmember Pierce.
Well, just to be clear, we're not ruling on your fence. We're only talking about policy going forward and how we're going to deal with all of the fences in town that have been done illegally.
Mm-hmm.
And, and clearly, this one is one that violates the current standard. That's not to say there aren't lots of others, because I drove around a good bit, there are some in your neighborhood, immediately adjacent even, that are in violation, but you're not the only one.
Correct.
But you happen to be the current one, and you happen to have had two contractors who, neither one who were licensed by the city, or they would have known that they had to have a permit. They should have known that anyway. I don't think there's any city that doesn't require a permit for this kind of a structure. But our question here at the council is where do we go from here on structures going forward? What do we do with structures that are in violation, that are in existence? How do we protect the right of way of the city? Because if PG&E or utilities or the Regional Water Quality Control Board requires us to put a drainage swale in the right of way there, guess what happens to that wall and that fence?
Comes out.
And it's. And it's, you know, that's, that's a real possibility with what is going on with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Doesn't mean we like it. It's going to cost the city a fortune when they decide to go that way. But we have to figure out how to handle this, and so, as our community development director was saying, there are some conditions we might be able to impose retroactively, or going forward on all of these properties, which would be to get liability waivers for the city naming us as an additional insured. I mean, but technically, anything that happens within that right-of-way is the city's responsibility too, and you would have to insure us against any of that. Those are just some of the things that we have to consider. So this raises a policy issue for us. How yours individually gets handled is not directly our decision, although our policy direction will probably have something to do with that. So this is something we got to wrestle with, and as I say, I drove around a good bit over this last weekend when I saw this was coming up, and you are not the only one, but you certainly are the one that's under construction right now and one of the most visible, so.
Right. Yes, sir. I think Julie and I are both speaking on this, because we've been on the council a long time, and this is something that comes up, it seems, you know, it dies and then all of a sudden it'll come up again, and I want to echo Julie's, we're not ruling on yours. I feel really badly for you, and if your neighbor wasn't an employee of Viking, well, even if he is, if he is, I do construction defect, I handle contractors all the time. You almost could be lucky, because you caught it now, rather than when you have to tear it down 10 years from now and Viking gives you the finger. Because right now, I would recommend getting an attorney and telling Viking that they're going to, you know, fix it, because they had an obligation to tell you, and they'll point to their, and that's why I asked you about a contract, because they'll point to their contract and say, see, it says you're responsible for permits. Well, my guess is you asked them, what do we need to do, and they soft-soled it, okay? They didn't tell you. They had an obligation to tell you. So Viking's the bad guy here, okay? A&amp;J fencing's the bad guy here. You're the innocent dupe. It happens all the time, and if your neighbor's out of compliance, and he's been out of compliance for 10 years, that makes it look good to you, and, you know, unfortunately, it's when you get, you know, you're the one that gets caught. So he's the second one in a fight, and so that's frustrating, and I get it. I don't have a lot of liquidity that I can just go, oh, yeah, we'll just redo this and make it right. But there is also a frustration, because we've had this issue come up every couple of years, and every couple of years, we try and get education out to the city, and it's frustrating when people, you know, and you're not entirely blameless, because you went to the Dana Hills, and they put in there that you got to get your permits, and you ignored that. And I get that, I've all been there, but it's frustrating, because we even had a council member that got into a beef with his neighbors, and he had to fix it, and, you know, there's probably more than half that have done it illegally without permits, and then the other half have done it with permits, spent the money, done it right, and every time this comes up, we get people that sit there and go, you made me do it, why are you going to give them a break? So it's, as much as we might have empathy for you as a person or somebody else that has done it, there's also the other side, that we've got to be consistent as a city, because we can't be willy-nilly going, well, this one's okay, that one's not, that one looks better, so we'll grant this one. That's a real problem for us, so that's why it's a policy decision. We've got to make some policy decisions that obviously are going to impact what you do. But free legal advice is I'd go talk to Viking and raise your voice and make it clear that they're going to be part of the solution going forward and not just you, because that's unacceptable. So with that, I think we have to be consistent as a city, that we have always been, and again, for you that have not been here, we've never proactively gone out and looked for violations. Other cities with big offices, they actually have code enforcement officers, they drive around, and they look, and they find things, and they're proactive. We've always been reactive, so that means if you get into a beef with your neighbor and you do something wrong, they're going to turn you in. If you get along with your neighbors, you usually get away with it, but that doesn't mean it's right. And so, but when we have notice of it, and there's potential implication of problems that the city could incur with right-of-way, we had a, up on Mount Air Circle, we had a big issue where somebody was putting up a wall and a very nice decorative thing, and it was probably one of the most beautiful fencing and courtyard stuff that I'd ever seen, but they didn't do it right, and they incurred an additional 10, or what was it, $10,000 or $15,000 to cut it off, because it was a visibility problem, and the city would have been potentially liable. So at a minimum, my feeling is, is that if we know of something, we've got to do one of two things, and we've got to seek indemnification and let them know, maybe we'll let it stand as long as they fulfill these requirements to protect us, because the reality is, most people in Clayton probably don't have the ability to tear it down and do it again, but the city's got to be protected, because if we don't, then we're giving a gift of public funds to, oh, we're going to let you guys get away with it, and we'll incur, and everybody, all the taxpayers incur the problem. And you don't have to stand up there if you don't want to. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. We're done asking the questions, if we have any more, we'll come to you. But I just, I don't see how we can get away with, once we're on notice of not doing it, and the problem you also have is you have three attorneys up here that know, once you're on notice, that, you know, you've got to do something.
Can't ignore it.
You can't ignore it, or you're going to do it. So I think there's probably a solution that staff can come up with, with Mala, to maybe satisfy that. I'm not sure that's sufficient, because we are going to get those who do it right, that are going to have real issues. You know, last year, you made me spend an extra $800 doing it, and then you let them get away with it. So there's a consistency issue. And I will say this, I don't want to make a decision tonight. I think this is something that, after we discuss it, we're going to probably have some questions, and I think we need to bring it back. But I can't, I can't, in good faith and conscience, sit there and say, once we're on notice, we can just let it go. Now, hopefully, maybe we can, because it is beautiful looking. And I, actually, I see the chief here. I remember, the other thing with fencing is the fire and police did not want it above a certain level for doing their jobs. I remember that came up a couple of years ago, when we had a 10-foot fence, and I don't know, Chief, if you're, if you have any thoughts on fence height, or Mindy?
Regardless of what happens with the location of the retaining wall, that fence needs to move.
Yeah.
So that fence will have to be moved back. The current code regulations is five feet from property line.
Which would be about two feet back, not, they don't have to be five feet back from the retaining wall.
It would be approximately 10 feet from the back of walk.
The way it's currently written?
Correct.
But you're recommending we consider moving the fence line to the property line?
Correct. And then depending on what that location's like, there still has to be a three-foot separation between that retaining wall and the fence to not be counted as one structure in regards to height.
And that's because of the height?
Yes.
That's exactly right.
So you've got, it's got to be steps, so that the police or fire can jump from one to the next and get over?
Correct. That was brought up back in 2004, when the city previously made modifications to the zoning ordinance as it pertained to fence height.
That's right.
Julie?
Yeah, I think we do have to methodically step through all of the questions, and Mindy has just alluded to some. Realistically, the retaining wall, I think, does have to be minimum five feet back. It's got to be. No, no closer, I mean, it can't be in the right-of-way. It just can't. Not now that we know about it, and it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's a problem. I know there are others in town that are in violation too, but it... And the fence has got to be separated from it when it's this kind of a configuration. I do suspect, after having driven by that a couple of times, I do think that that retaining wall is too tall to be built without a permit, and I don't know how you, how you retroactively go back and, and show that it was built correctly. I mean, there's testimony, but I know that when you're doing that and you get an inspection, you don't backfill until people can see it and inspect it and verify that it's properly anchored, and it's as deep as it's supposed to be.
Correct. The building code requirement is that any retaining walls over 36 inches in height require a building permit.
Very familiar with that one.
Yeah, so not only that, but with the fence on top, that is another trigger point as well, but they, the building department, I believe, does have some processes in place in order to retroactively go back and able to issue a building permit, whether or not they need to move some dirt or soil to verify that it was built as required by the, you know, structural specifications by the manufacturer. I believe they do have the ability, because I know they require people to go back and open walls and stuff to see that, you know, plumbing and things were done correctly, retroactively.
Anyway, whatever needs to be done on that, we need to at least get that done, but I personally have an issue with building retaining wall in the right-of-way.
Okay, so question on that, Julie, because I want to know your rationale, help us out here. Let's just hypothetically take that that right-of-way goes, it exists for 50 years without anybody needing it or anything happening. Is your objection to the right-of-way just that it's potentially going to be there...
It sets a precedent.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is, because we have many others that are out of code, we could potentially set up a massive turn-in-your-neighbor...
An amnesty program?
Well, no, what I'm going to, what I'm going to say is, you're going to, you're going to see one, and then somebody's out there, and then they're going to see another, and it's going to be a cascade effect, and we're going to have a lot of unhappy residents that are going to have to redo something based on a potential. Now, again, if they had done it right in the first place, they wouldn't have to face that, so there's some caveat emptor, but I'm thinking, if we get creative, potentially we can save those by either making them post-bonds or doing something for that eventuality, such that, or even, even a lien or something. I just, I would hate to sit there and tear down 70 out-of-compliant walls in Clayton on the potential that we might need it down the road, because we might never need it. And I, and I get it, they should have got the permit, everybody should have got the permit, and so part of me is, you know, it's on you, but the reality is, we've got some really nice structures in town that have done the right thing for...
But at the very least, Mindy's right, at the very least, the fence has got to move back.
Sure, okay, and I don't, you'd gladly do that if you could get away with the others, right?
Could you speak to the microphone, because this is being recorded?
Again, we're not dealing with just this individual. We're trying to look at policy.
This is the policy questions, and I guess my issue is that we've got to protect the right-of-way in one way or another, and if that winds up being getting an indemnification for the city and the insurance policies and naming us as an additional insured or whatever else that, that takes, that's one thing. The fence decision we have to make, can that be allowed on the property line or not? That's something we need to bring back for future discussion.
We were actually also seeking direction from you on that point, if you are interested...
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there is probably merit to allowing the fence to be on the property line, but it's got to be done with a permit that allows verification that it really is on the property line. Don't just assume it's a five-foot setback for the property line, because, as I said, in my neighborhood, it's seven and a half feet back of sidewalk, in others, it's different, and we've got to make sure where that actually is. The other question I wanted to ask staff is, does this wall, as it's currently constructed, meet the 35-foot site triangle? Because that looks higher than four feet, or at four feet.
We haven't gone out and actually measured any site obstructions, because the question also, not only for the intersection, but for his neighbor behind him with the driveway as well, that could potentially be another site obstruction issue as well.
Yeah, and I think the site obstruction thing is one we can't really get around.
Correct.
That one is a real problem. And there again, if the wall were only the 36 inches high, and the fence is set back from it, then you probably don't have a site obstruction on that straight line of the road from the driveway at all, but my other concern is where that curve is, does that meet the 35-foot site triangle? Because that's a busy intersection.
There's a stop sign.
Yes, it has a stop sign, but you still have to be able to see, and from both directions.
All right. Okay, is there any other discussion on this? Go ahead.
Yes, I think we're looking at two different things. This particular case before us is dealing with something that's already occurred. We did stop it before it's been completed, but, you know, the other policy we're looking at is where do we go moving forward? So I think we do need to divide it into two different policy questions. How do we deal with the existing violations, and how do we ensure that, as best we can, get the word out and adhere to what we think is a reasonable standard? And do we want to modify that standard, at least on the fence line going forward? So I think we do have two different questions here. What I saw with your conditions were, how do we deal with our existing fences that are out there, out of compliance now?
Correct. For the, for the code enforcement component, just if I get to the question, so do you want staff to proactively go out and respond to these unauthorized encroachments? As Councilmember Shue indicated, you know, you could also possibly have a cascade effect with neighbors turning other neighbors in, saying, well, if I have to correct mine, then here's a list of 100 violations in the city, now, city, you go out and go fix it, because you made me do it.
Right, and maybe we can address that now. We have always been reactive rather than proactive, and with the state of the economy, all that stuff, to put further stressors on our staff in that regard, I think is ludicrous, and I don't think it's warranted. So I would say that we want to continue to be the way we have been, and that's reactive, and that puts the onus on the homeowner, not the city.
But a good public relations, public education campaign is absolutely necessary.
We've done this every two or three years, we're going to have to do it again, and that's the reality of it, because we do have turnover and everything else.
But we also have a way of dealing with the current violations to try to correct that and protect that right-of-way area.
Yeah, but we're not going to do that here now.
No, but that's one of the policy questions.
No, I know that.
Why can't we give policy direction on reactive, proactive?
Correct.
So the question is, Toya and Jim, do you agree to be reactive still, or...
Oh, yeah, be reactive, absolutely. No, 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 I don't want them going out and looking for other issues, but go ahead.
I agree definitely in terms of being reactive. I don't think we have the resources or time to spend on being proactive on that, but I do, so I have a couple of issues on this in general. One is sort of the city liability, and one is the precedent we're setting. So do we want to set the precedent where we sort of award people who don't get the permits and ask for forgiveness afterwards, and that's the difficult line? But, but I definitely worry about it too, in terms of, well, what's the, whatever the outcome is, do we tomorrow then have 70 neighbors calling on their neighbor and reporting things, and suddenly we're flooded? Because I agree, once the city's on notice on something like that, then we have to be consistent, and we have to be positive, because we can't be arbitrary, and then we'll get into whole different issues. So I don't know where the balance is, and I come back maybe, you know, the city liability. So I think we, once we're on notice of something, we definitely, I think, have to fix it so that the city's rights are protected, so that we don't get in the liability situation. But I want to point something else on the public education aspect. I think that's absolutely, we need to do something, and I guess this kind of comes in waves every couple of years, but, you know, when I, when I've been, we've been talking about this tonight, I don't know that it's obvious for an average resident, it wasn't even obvious to me coming in today, where, you know, the public property ends and the private property begins, because I think most people do think that, you know, once the sidewalk concrete ends, that's where their private property starts. I mean, I think there's some clues when you see the fire hydrant on the other side, well, maybe it's not your private property, but still, I think it's, it's hard to know, because if it varies between different neighborhoods as to how many feet it is after that.
Which, again, though, is easily remedied if you just come down and ask Milan or Mindy, they're going to go, okay, here it is.
Agreed, and that goes back to the fact of, you know, do you get a permit and ask for the question, or you just ask for forgiveness afterwards?
It's on your title.
Yeah.
When you buy... When you buy your house, it's on your title.
I know, and most people don't understand that, and that's, you know, reality, but you're still held to it legally.
Okay, we have, we're still in the open public comment, I want to close unless there's someone else from the public.
They wanted to comment.
Okay, one more. Please come up to the microphone so we can hear you, and folks at home can hear you.
Just on the corner of there, so I'm sorry that we didn't put the tape measure there, and I'm not questioning your measurement, but on the corner here, those large blocks are eight inches tall, so you can count one, two, three of them, that's 24 inches. The small blocks are four inches, so that's 28, plus the cap is three inches. So it's about 31 on the corner out of the ground. That's on this section. As it goes down, it may get a little bit bigger, there may be a fourth block.
It's not measured out of the ground, though, is it? Because then you just put a little dirt on top of it.
It's on a mound.
It's down to the footing.
Yeah, you're going to lose every time on that.
That's okay, I just wanted to point that out, but we're...
And your company should know better. And I'm not, listen, it's frustrating.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, and I am closing the public comment period at this time, and we'll bring it back here for direction to staff.
You know, I'd like to ask staff to lead us through the questions that they want answered, so we can do this in a reasonable way.
We dealt with one.
Okay, so the first basic question is, does the council want to allow encroachments into the public right of way? Yes or no?
Going forward, absolutely not.
Absolutely not going forward, but then we have to have a policy decision about how we deal with...
Exactly.
So for the ones that come up to staff's awareness, how do you want us to handle those in regards to, are we going to have them remove them? Are we going to have them record a document with some of the conditions that we've identified? And we will implement, you know, whatever, obviously, direction is given to us, but however the council wants to handle that.
A couple of questions for Mala and you on that then. If I understand it correctly, well, tell me, the right of way is our right of way, but utilities, others, want to use that right of way. If it's not there and there's not accessibility, they don't have any recourse, right? But then they could impact, you know, stuff to our customers, right?
No, in that case, if we had an encroachment agreement, we'd require the item to be removed. So if one of the utilities needed to come in, we'd have to have, in this example, the fence removed and the retaining wall.
Okay, but if they don't, I mean, they don't, if we say, the utility has the right to enforce that?
No.
Or we have the right to say, if we want it, we enforce it?
We'd be the ones doing it.
Right, okay.
Is that all?
Well, so, in that regard, I think we need to be creative here, because I think creating a cascade is not what I want to do and get people wasting money on that, because some of these things are, and again, that right of way may never be used, but if it is, it's on the homeowner. And it's on the homeowner who sells his home and doesn't tell the next homeowner. So I think there has to be some way to put that on the title, and I think that there needs to be some protection. I'm not satisfied, I mean, one, if it's in the right of way, requiring the homeowner for indemnity, that's great, but that also adds a significant burden to staff, potentially, to every year, make sure that we've been put on as additional insured, or there has to be, we have to have, figure some way out. Maybe we just put that on there and, you know, we can go out, we can lien the house or whatever. Got to be some way to do it without creating and causing people that, for whatever reason, have made a mistake.
Can it go on the title?
I don't know.
Because if the house is sold, how do we make sure that the purchaser knows?
It would be a recorded document.
It would have to be a recorded document.
It would be reported together.
Yeah, Toya, you have a question?
So I, one other suggestion, so is there any ability to go after the contractor? And I say that because I think, I'm astonished, actually, that A&amp;J doesn't have a business license with the city of Clayton, I think they do pretty much every other...
They built it.
Right, but I mean, is there any ability, so I mean, I've seen some codes where, you know, you, first of all, you allow penalties, but, you know, if you have repeat offenders, you have multiplier effect on penalties, I mean, is there a way to kind of, I mean, I think the contractors should, I mean, if they know, they should disclose that to the homeowners too. So is there any ability to kind of factor something like that?
But you're just talking about for the permit, I mean, or for the business license?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's the question, I mean, if a contractor does a work, that they should definitely know that requires a permit from the city, and they do it anyway, and they say, I don't care. I mean, is there a way to go after the, put some liability?
Well, that's the homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah, our issue is with the property owner.
We don't want to put that burden on our staff.
Correct.
The property owner has to do that, and of course, you know, they've had lawyers that put in there, in the very fine print, you're responsible for permits, and then they tell you, don't worry about it. It's shady, but...
Well, my law degree is from Kmart, so let's... I've got three attorneys there, one over here, so we're swimming in them. So technically, if, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will.
But?
If somebody has a contractor that they hire, and it says in the contract that the contractor will take care of all permits, and they don't get one, and they build it in the wrong place, is the contractor liable for fixing the problem?
We would go, you know, for code enforcement purposes, we're going to go after the property owner, and then it would be the property owner's responsibility to say, it was your duty contractor per our contract to get the permit, so you need to fix this and/or pay my fines and whatever else that might be coming.
So to answer your question, Julie, is, that's a contract between the homeowner and the contractor?
No, I get that part.
Not our...
But between the homeowner and the contractor, they should have some legal recourse.
Well, yes, they do.
Depending what the contract is.
But again...
Depends on what the contract says, I get that.
And almost all of them have something in there buried, which makes it difficult for the homeowner to go after them, but, you know...
Without a city business license, that would go on the homeowner's side, I would think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back to the question then about what do we do with our existing violations?
The ones that we, it brought to your attention, the ones that are in act, are on hold right now because of the, they've been, got to stop or... The outlined items on the overhead is what staff was recommending a way forward to address those in terms of the...
There needs to be some additional leeway, because some of these violations are much worse than others. Some of them are fences 10 feet tall versus six feet, but it's in the right of way. I mean, there's different...
There's two real issues, one is the encroachment into the right of way, and there's flexibility with that, but for like fence locations, that's black and white, that's what our code states, that's what staff's going to enforce, unless the city council chooses to change that direction to staff and codify it.
But you'll still enforce whatever that is.
But we'll still enforce the municipal code, absolutely. But whether or not, you know, the encroachment, as the city council, you have the ability as the real property owner directors to tell us, you know, what do you want to do with the real property, essentially?
So, okay, my feeling is, is that there's two options, or two ways to do this in conjunction. One is, the homeowner has the option of redoing it and putting it back in compliance. Or two, we as a city have to come up with a plan that adequately protects us and the city and taxpayers in the case of eventualities down the road. That's what I'm thinking that we need to send back to Mala and Mindy and get some real direction on stuff. And just personally, I would hate to see you have to tear down that retaining wall. But moving the fence, that's an automatic, you know, you're not going to get any sympathy from anybody up here on that. But on the retaining wall, that, it looks nice and the neighbors like it, so I want to, I want to give you the option of...
As long as it's not in the site.
Right, I get that. But I want to give you the option to say, okay, we're either going to tear it down, and Viking's going to pay for it, or we're going to indemnify, however we want to do it, record it, do all that, protect us. And that may be, and probably is the best solution, because it may not happen for 40 years until you're on your third home, and it's the new person's responsibility. But that's, we have, those are the only two options. You either put it back in compliance, or we cover the city and the taxpayers. And that's what we need to get back to us from staff.
And going forward, because the other property owner is not here, I think the other question is, do we change the location of a six-foot allowable fence to the property line?
That would be the second thing.
That's second.
One is encroachment, one is the relocation, the location of the fence should be...
Right, no, I understand, relocating the line that we allow, rather than saying all six-foot fences have to be five feet back of property line, should we allow them to be on the property line for consistency, if less that we have to maintain? It makes it easier for the homeowner to maintain it too, even though, because it's their responsibility up to the property line. I think that's another one that I think we need to address, but we have to be really clear, that's only for a six-foot fence that can be on the property line. Anything taller than six feet has got to be separated by five feet from the property line. So if you have a short retaining wall on the property line, you got to go back five feet, otherwise you've got too tall a fence, right?
Correct, yeah.
Does staff have any issues with moving the fence line up to the property line?
Staff's actually recommending it to be at the property line, because...
What potential issues, if we do that, is there any downside to doing that?
The only conceivable one that I could come up with was creating kind of a tunnel vision as you're driving down, you know, a main thoroughfare, but you see it on...
It's still going to be five feet back of sidewalk.
Right, and you still have, you know, like on Keller Ridge, it's, you know, they're directly behind the walk, and it's not, from an aesthetic perspective, I think that's kind of why it was put into place. And before the code change in 2004, it was required to be 10 feet back from the property line, which, that's almost in, most people's backyards are into the house at that time.
Yeah, that's in my back. Anybody have a problem with moving it up?
No, I think it gives the property owner a more usable backyard.
So we've got five of us in agreement?
I mean, in some places where back of sidewalk is property line, that's going to be a pretty stark look. Aesthetically, you've got no green.
Yeah.
To me, it's the height issue. So I mean, if you put a six-foot fence, but then you have a five-foot or four-foot or three-foot retaining wall, and then suddenly you have these...
Right, then you got to do that, but we're not talking about that, we're just talking about, so we're all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Do we need, that's the policy?
Have you got the direction you need to...
That direction is clear to us on that issue.
Correct. So we will bring that back for the, both the planning commission and the city council to consider.
And get creative if you can on how we protect...
On the legal stuff.
You know, the legal...
We have that, we've done that before for other cities, but I think the question that we had is, did you actually want to see that come back to you and see the agreement, or is that just direction that...
No, I'd like to...
I think we want to.
Okay.
You've got three attorneys on this thing.
Nah.
And just as a point of clarification, the agreement would be able to supersede, like if there were any utility lines in the way, the three-foot clearance around the fire hydrants, any site obstruction, any help, yeah, any of those issues that would arise.
Well, Mala, you just mentioned that other cities are obviously dealing with this issue as well, many that you deal with, I would imagine.
Yes, in another city that I work with, it's not fences that are the issue, it's the decorative mailboxes that become in the right of way, and then sometimes there's visibility issues with the neighbor, and so the other city I work with, the approach they've taken is this agreement, but they do require insurance, and if you can't get the insurance, then you've got to remove it. So I want to be clear that whenever, when we bring back an agreement that you've approved as deformed, there won't be any negotiation, it'll either take the agreement and execute it and provide the insurance, or remove the encroachment.
Jim, the homeowner had a question, could he, could we bring him back up?
Sure.
He had a comment or question.
Thank you, one question, I just want to, I know it's been mentioned, I just wanted to clarify. So my existing fence and existing retaining wall at 199 Montair Parkway is considered part of the bucket that's already in place, that'll be looked at with the rest of the fences and walls that are in place, since the wall's been in over a year, and it's been overlooked over a year with the remainder in the neighborhood. My fence has been in for over five months, along with all the other in the neighborhood, if the two in question have already been in place and was only brought into light due to the backyard being completed. I just want to make sure of it being treated fairly and equitable with the existing and put in the decision that affects, and I'm more than happy to go in the decision that affects all of the existing and comply to whatever I need to comply to, and I definitely want to do that, you know, whatever it takes, you know, hopefully not too financially impacting. But just be considered that, since they are existing, it's included in that existing bucket and not the future go-forward, because that fence is completed, has been completed, bill's been final and paid, check's been cashed and deposited over a month, I can provide the bank statements. Same with the wall, the wall's been in over a year, and it's been there, and it's just was brought into light due to the second project of a backyard project.
And staff, ready to respond?
Let's staff answer.
The question here really pertains to whether or not the retaining wall can stay in the public right of way. The fence will have to be moved, the municipal code requires it, and the existing considerations that we're discussing and talking about this evening have to do with the encroachments into the public right of way. We still have to enforce the municipal code as it's written.
And I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that I'm treated fairly, is with all the other fences are already in place within Clayton, and I'm more than happy to move mine, but just to make sure that all the others are under the same guidelines as well, that are already in place, bought, paid for, checks cashed, already in place, that they're under the same guidelines and...
Yes, the reality is, is that anybody who is out of compliance now, if we walk down the street and we see they're out of compliance, we can enforce that and make them do it. We try not to be proactive, it's usually only when somebody brings it up to our attention. So you're not being singled out, you're the same as anybody else who's out of compliance.
Okay, but that's all I asked.
And again...
But the fence has to move.
The fence is going to, that's something that is a safety issue for the fire and police, as well as our municipal code, that's what you're going to have to deal with. And again, for legal advice, Vikings should be paying, okay?
Well, or A&amp;J fence, because they should have known what to pay.
Whatever, you shouldn't be paying for that, and I got a guy, if you need a guy to go after.
Okay, we've got, yes, last comment.
I have one more sort of side comment on, as we're thinking about all of this. So, does our code currently allow the city to recoup its enforcement costs?
Yes.
Yes, it would have to be approved by the city council to place a lien if there were, if the city were to abate certain things.
But time and material you spend on any, any kind of complaint, you can...
Up to a certain amount, other than that, it's on the city's dime, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah, it's your time, we can't, but the actual contract to go out and remove it and replace it is what we get.
Yes, correct, yeah.
But staff time is overhead or whatever, without that.
So then we...
But legal time would be chargeable.
You know, if we do an agreement, we typically put in the agreement, we can require whatever we want in the agreement, separate from a municipal violation, so we typically put all costs incurred.
Because I think some other cities definitely have, they have, you know, they have in their codes where even staff time and material spent on enforcement can be recouped, and some cities even have a fixed minimum fee that they'll charge.
I think that's been a policy decision here, so...
Yeah, so it's something to consider maybe as well, I mean, not that it has to be imposed, but that at least an ability, so that there's not sort of that carrot.
Because we don't know what's going to happen once this goes into effect.
Okay, have we given you the proper direction?
Yes, I think we got it, and we'll be back with the proper documents.
All right, thank you. That concludes item 8A. We'll now move into item 8B, was a discussion of staff recommendations for various local policy issues arising from the California voter's passage of Proposition 64 and the state legislature's passage of SB 94, the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act regarding local regulation of cannabis. Mindy?
On December 20th, 2016, the city council passed an urgency ordinance banning all personal outdoor cultivation, and staff made a presentation requesting direction from the council regarding Proposition 64, the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act. The council directed staff to not regulate the indoor cultivation for the personal use of marijuana, add provisions in the municipal code to treat marijuana similarly to alcohol with no consumption in public, further address marijuana in 2017 to allow more time for legal clarification, and lastly, determine what actions neighboring jurisdictions have taken. Staff is now coming back to the council with updates on legislation, as well as what our neighboring jurisdictions have been up to with regard to the adult use of marijuana. So on the federal level, no changes to the Federal Controlled Substances Act have been made, however, a bill has been introduced to change marijuana from a Schedule I narcotic to another controlled substances schedule. The bill is currently at the committee level and will probably be considered sometime during the 2018 session. Further, the Trump administration and Attorney General Sessions have not made any changes at the federal level in regards to cannabis... level in regards to cannabis enforcement, and the Cole memo issued under the Obama administration is still relevant. The Cole memo essentially conveys that states have, that have legalized marijuana should have a robust regulatory system in place and demonstrate the willingness to enforce that regulatory system. At the state level, on June 26, 2017, Governor Brown signed SB 94 into law, which is the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, also known as Maucrisol. It doesn't roll off the tongue very easily. This bill combined the medical and adult use of cannabis systems into one licensing structure with the same regulatory framework governing both medical and adult-use facilities. Many of the regulations have not changed from Proposition 64, such as local governments still retain their full regulatory authority. The biggest change with the passage of SB 94 was vertical integration is now allowed as it pertains to cannabis businesses. Also, AB 133 was signed into law on September 16, which made a few technical fixes or changes to Maucrisol. So the local regulations here in Clayton for laws referencing marijuana mostly pertain to medical purposes, and the municipal code is silent on the recreation or the adult use of marijuana. The city has prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries, testing laboratories, facilities that store or maintain marijuana as part of their operations, and outdoor cultivation or production of cannabis, and some indoor cultivation. The council did not prohibit the delivery of medical marijuana due to the concerns regarding access for patients within the community. So what have our neighbors been up to? Antioch, Brentwood, Danville, and Arinda and Pittsburgh have all said no to any commercial cannabis uses, as well as medical uses. Concord has directed staff to draft an ordinance to put a ban in place. However, they have publicly stated that they will be further exploring the issue once more clarity has come down from the state. The county has directed staff to prepare a permanent ordinance to prohibit all commercial uses until an ordinance to fully regulate all aspects of cannabis is completed. In Pleasant Hill, the planning commission has recommended to the city council to consider allowing retail medical cannabis. And there actually, the city council is discussing that this evening as well. Walnut Creek has put a moratorium in place for commercial cannabis, but staff will be returning during the fourth quarter with additional information. And the city council will be providing further direction to staff at that time. Clayton does not legally have to have an ordinance in place by January 1, 2018, but cities will only have 60 days to respond to the state once notified of an application to open a business in the jurisdiction. Further, under SB 94, if a local jurisdiction does not have an ordinance enacted to address the license activity, the state can unilaterally issue a license for that business. The state is only prohibited from issuing a license if the business activity would violate local ordinance, and if there is no applicable ordinance, then there is no violation. The local regulation of medical and adult-use cannabis does not have to be consistent with one another and can be regulated differently. However, staff is recommending that the code be amended in such a manner that thoroughly addresses both medical and adult-use cannabis clearly. This recommendation is based on legal direction that if the municipal code does not explicitly address or is silent on the matter, it could be interpreted that the city allows all types of cannabis uses within the jurisdiction, or the city could be legally challenged for denying a permit if an ordinance does not cover the activity. Staff is looking for direction from the council on the following aspects of the cannabis industry: retail sales, commercial cultivation, distribution, delivery, testing, and manufacturing. Retail sales could mean a variety of different scenarios, considering vertical integration is now allowed. A retail location could have onsite cultivation and/or a delivery component. There could be a traditional storefront, a non-traditional storefront, such as warehouses making deliveries, or micro businesses with a combination of different licensed activities. The city could allow medical retail cannabis only and prohibit adult use, or the city could prohibit both or allow both. Staff does have concerns, such as the cannabis industry is new and untested, the state of California is lacking complete industry regulations, and Clayton is a small city with limited resources to be on the forefront of issues like this. Therefore, staff recommends a prohibition which would allow time to see how these areas evolve over time, and the city could always readjust its ordinances at a later date if they were compelled to do so. While Clayton does not have large areas of land dedicated to agricultural uses or industrial buildings that could be utilized for the cultivation of cannabis, there are still potential opportunities where commercial cultivation could conceivably occur in town. The legal recommendation regarding having an ordinance that affirmatively prohibits or affirmatively regulates, and coupled with staff's previous concerns regarding the untested waters of this new industry, staff is recommending prohibiting the indoor and outdoor cultivation of cannabis. Distribution. Again, Clayton really doesn't have the land use designations or existing facilities that are typically used or zoned for the warehousing and distribution of products, but there could still be available opportunities for this type of use. Distributors of cannabis cannot deliver directly to consumers. They can only go from licensee to licensee and perform the transport, verify the quality control, and collect the state tax. However, this has become much more ambiguous with the passage of SB 94, which now allows for the vertical integration. And again, staff has concerns regarding security and impacts to public safety, therefore is recommending the prohibition of the distribution and warehousing of both medical and adult-use cannabis. At the state level, in terms of licensing, deliveries are no longer a separate licensed activity now. They actually fall under the retail license. So whether or not the city decides to allow a delivery service to set up its headquarters, which would be, in this particular case, a retail store, the city may choose whether to allow cannabis deliveries that actually originate outside of the city limits and be delivered within Clayton. Given the city council's historical support of medical cannabis deliveries originating outside of the jurisdiction, this should clearly be stated as allowable within the municipal code to remove any ambiguity regarding allowable or prohibited uses and activities. The city council's support of medical cannabis does raise the question of whether or not they would like to allow deliveries for the adult use of cannabis by licensed facilities that do originate outside of the city limits. Proposition 64 received 53.8% of support from the Clayton voters. Adult-use cannabis deliveries would provide access to a product that the majority of Clayton voters supported and would not have the same impacts and permanence as a retail storefront could create. If the council enacted an ordinance to allow deliveries, it could be easily modified in the future or rescinded without residual non-conforming land uses still in existence. Therefore, staff recommends allowing deliveries of both medical and adult-use cannabis that originate outside of the city limits. Testing is a key component for all of the cannabis businesses, because they're all subjected to this requirement. The testing will determine the purity, the potency, the concentration, and cannaboid ratios. From a land use perspective, testing can be located in an office or a lab-type environment. However, staff does have concerns in regards to odors and safety due to the storage and keeping of cannabis products. Therefore, staff recommends prohibiting testing for both medical and adult-use cannabis. And lastly, manufacturing. The manufacturing component of the cannabis industry is probably one of the widest-ranging components due to the vast business types that could be considered under this category. Manufacturing would include bakeries, extraction facilities, and the creation of personal products, such as lotions and salves. And these facilities could be large or be home-based. While some of these manufacturing processes may be benign, some could require extensive oversight and regulation due to their extraction techniques. And as indicated earlier by staff, due to the newness of the industry, staff has concerns about allowing manufacturing. Therefore, staff is recommending prohibiting all cannabis manufacturing within the city. So it's recommended that the city council discuss and provide direction on the various staff recommendations regarding the potential prohibition and/or the regulation of medical and adult-use cannabis. And that concludes my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes. I'll let Tui go first this time.
I have first two initial questions. So when you're on page five, when you have the list of items, where are you looking for direction? Obviously, we're trying to address this very comprehensively. So I have a question as to whether that list should include two other items that we kind of make a decision on and incorporate. One is, so I understand the state law says that we cannot regulate personal indoor cultivation use, obviously. But I think we talked previously recreational outdoor cultivation. Should that be part of this list as well?
The council's already addressed that, unless they want to go into a different direction. There was an urgency ordinance passed back in December of 2016 that prohibited the outdoor grow for personal use.
Okay. So you're putting that in, whatever we already did will come in.
Yeah, it'll be a comprehensive cannabis package that comes before the council.
Okay. And then my other, other one is home occupancy permits. So obviously, there's an industry being created for edible goods, and you know, we approved, you know, home occupation permits for different kinds of bakery operations. So I mean, they're home occupancy permits, but they're obviously for resale. So is that something that should kind of be in this?
So depending on how the council wants to address it, that's something that we were already considering in regards to manufacturing, or, because it's, because there's also the cottage food industry that has special state regulations. So from staff's perspective, unless the council directs differently, was going to be a blanket prohibition of any cannabis-type businesses that are home-based.
Okay. So we'll incorporate those in that discussion. Yeah. Okay.
David? Great job by staff, and I say we follow all the recommendations. People can still have it delivered in if they need it, but we keep out problems. So my recommendation is follow staff's recommendations.
Julie?
I would agree with that. Go with the state law, allow six indoor plants maximum for the entire household, not per permit, but for the entire property, and allow delivery from outside sources only, and everything else is no.
I would agree with that. I just have one question. I noticed in the full staff report, when you talked about cultivation, you did use commercial cultivation and didn't capture that when you were just doing the summary. So commercial, how would you define commercial cultivation?
So commercial cultivation would be anything beyond the six plants that you're allowed to have within, and it is per residence. The state law did clarify that. It's not per person, it is per residence. So it'd be anything above and beyond your six plants for personal growth.
That would be defined in it as well.
And that's indoor.
Yeah.
Yes, and that is defined in the state law.
Outdoor isn't a problem. We have those drones, remember? So we're checking on that.
They don't stop the flavor of it drifting over a neighborhood.
I support all the recommendations of staff, but I have a question. On the one for delivery, you say allow deliveries of medical and adult-use cannabis. Does that imply that once recreational becomes approved, that somebody could have it recreationally delivered to their residents?
Yeah, correct. Just as a point of clarification, the passage of SB 94 changed the terminology from like recreational to adult use.
Okay, so that's what it is. Okay.
Yeah. So, and from staff's perspective, we would look at, when drafting the regulations, that it would be to an individual's home, like you couldn't be at the Clayton Club and get a delivery.
A pizza and a...
A pizza and a cannabis delivery at the Clayton Club.
And then another question is, if you have this delivered to your residence, are you only allowed to smoke it in your residence? Or can you smoke it on the street?
Currently, the way that state law is drafted is prohibit it to ingest or to smoke in public. But city staff...
You cannot do it in public.
You cannot do it in public currently.
Much like smoking cigarettes.
Right. You can't ingest. So, but based on council's direction back in December of 2016, you had asked for clarification of a smoke, in the smoking ordinance, and staff will also bring back that component in 2018. It's, there isn't as much of, as an urgency, because there are already some state regulations.
But before the concert season starts, please, it has been an issue.
Okay.
We've had to have people admonished...
Okay.
...to leave.
Well, you want to get this back in January anyway, don't you?
These regulations will be back before the end of the year. It's anticipated they'll be here in November.
But the smoking ordinance revisions, I'm just asking that come back before the concert season.
Would that be included, the smoking?
It'll probably, we wouldn't be able to encompass all of those changes before the January 1 deadline for implementation of, on the state licensing level, so we'll bring that back in 2018.
We don't have the same sense of urgency for that.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
But it can be done before the concerts.
Yes.
All right. Clarify again for me for allowing the, smoking on the street.
So the state regulation prohibits smoking and ingesting in public.
In public.
There isn't really a clear definition of what public means in the state law, but that would be clarified in the local ordinance as to what, because right now, you can't smoke tobacco, for instance, in the Grove.
Yeah.
Right.
The reason why I bring it up, because last Wednesday, when we were playing bocce, I don't know if you smelled it, but it was coming into the courts.
It's private property.
That was the carnage.
But they were on the public street, smoking it, and the, and the current was blowing into the bocce courts.
But there was language about whether it's allowed to drift far enough that it's offensive to neighbors and things like that, too. So we need to think about that.
Did you order pizza on Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's beginning to come up as a problem in some neighborhoods, that their neighbors are out in the backyard smoking, and the other neighbors then don't want the kids out in the backyard the same time.
Particularly smaller lots.
Yeah, and it raises the issue of private property rights as well, though. I mean, you can go out and enjoy a cigarette on your back patio as well, and it's the same type of issue with odors wafting over the fence lines.
Okay. Any other discussions? It sounds like the council is all unanimous on the recommendations of staff. Is that correct?
Yep. Good job.
You got?
Clear direction.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, that concludes item 8B. Item nine, council items for limited requests and directives for future meetings. Anything from anyone? Silence. No. No close session? We will now adjourn this council meeting to the next one on October 17.
I do, I do want to mention, I'm going to miss that meeting on the 17th. I'm out of town.
You will be?
Yes.
Okay. I may be, and I was just going to talk with you.
Well, the rest of us will just have to carry on.
Well, I don't know. I'm trying to work my calendar up. Okay, very good. So that it. We're concluded, and good evening.